Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledgeable Agents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 11th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Paul Hassan is going to do our prayer this morning. Did you want to come up here?
Good morning, peace be upon you. First, I want to thank the Commissioner, Commissioner Tom Williams for asking and also, as well as the other Commissioners for their support and as well as the job that they're doing in this county and also affording the first time for a pastor from the Islamic Community, which I think shows the universality of the faith, Abrahamic faith, Abraham, excuse me, the Jewish faith, Christian faith, and the Muslim faith. So, and we just wanted to thank the Commissioners for allowing this to happen because this is a first and just to show that there's only one creation and one God. So, I want to do the prayers, actually, it's called the Opening Prayer, but it's similar to the prayer in the Bible and it's called the Lord's Prayer. And this prayer I'm going to give to you is similar to the Lord's Prayer, so I want to, if you want to stand, you can, if you want to, however you want to do it, it's up to you. That's, and again, if you want to read the Lord's Prayer when you go home, and the prayer I'm going to read is similar to that prayer. Again, we thank you and let us pray. In the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, praise be to God, the cherished and esteemed of the world, most gracious, most merciful, master of the day of judgment, thee alone do we worship and thine need do we seek, show us the straight way, the way upon whom thou bestow thy grace, those, show thy grace, those whose portion is not wrath and who never go astray. We ask that you bless this meeting, bless our leadership, the Commissioners, we ask that you help them to judge, to govern in justice and also in truth. We ask that you bless this county, those that are hurting from the floods recently we had, we ask you to help them and make it easy and have mercy on them. Also, we ask that you bless this county, our judges, our workers, and also ask those who are sick and those who are poor, help them to have a home, they may not have a home, to have a home, because the best home is in thee. We know that we're referred by you with many names, Jehovah, God, Allah, but we know that Christ, but we know there's only one God and we understand the universality of all the faith and we ask, and these blessings in your most holy and righteous name, amen.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Kahlo has our dog from the dog kennel this morning.
Chris, Amari would like another dog. Our featured dog this week is a three-year-old male pointer mix. He's got a great personality. He's available for adoption at our kennel today?
Fourteenth.
Oh, for the fourteenth, can't get him until the fourteenth, but we do have 28 dogs, so if you're looking for a new friend for your family, stop down and see us.
At 9:45, we'll have our second public hearing of CDBG. At 10 o'clock, we'll have the Veterans Budget, SO under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
SO moved.
Second. Discussions. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Appropriations.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Transfers.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, just for record, I'm going to be a no vote on the $10,000 transfer for the Clerk of Court for the building.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Advances.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
I have a couple potential new hires at Job and Family Services and Golden Acres that I wish to talk with the Board about also, potential sale and purchase of real estate, both of those topics will have them as Sunshine Law for Executive Session. Discussion said ask us the conclusion of our regular board meetings, say we go into Executive Session, we talk about those two items I've outlined. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of June 4th.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Declaration of official intent under the U.S. Treasury Regulations for Purpose of Section 103 and 141 to 150 that Lorraine County declares reasonable expects that capital and other expenditures described in the 2,220,000 bond and description of capital and other expenses to be reimbursed for roofs, sidewalks, vehicle share, upgrading of existing fire alarm systems, and work on existing parking ducts.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Community Development, authorize transfer of 759 Oliver Street, Sheffield Lake to Lorraine County Port Authority for the purposes disposition in accordance with the NSP 3 guidelines.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreement with Sin Test Corporation to provide a mat rental service effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $82.97 bi-weekly and subject to maximum increase of 5%. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board with increased value and changes in program content with prosecutor's approval as to form.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Enter into a plan for expenditure funds allocated by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for state fiscal year 14. County has received $310,693 for legitimate family services and child support activities.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with various transportation companies to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for state fiscal year 15, effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board with increased value and changes in program and content with prosecutor's approval as to form, one, provide ride Cleveland and mountain not to exceed $400,000, and two, life care wheelchair services Illyria and the mountain not to exceed $650,000.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, establish a new classification in the Solid Waste Management District in accordance with the Ohio Revise Code 305.17, 325.17, and 325.27. Authorize administrator to execute all necessary documents.
SO moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
Looks like we have a long morning pass and yield to counsel, thank you.
Mr. Anis.
I have one matter pending litigation that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in Executive Session.
Commissioners' report. Since we can't start our meeting next one until 9:45, I'm going to just take a couple minutes. I attended my Goodwill yearly meeting and I just wanted to throw out a couple of statistics for you of what they do for our county. 1,267 people of Lorraine County received help from job coaches and developers in 2013. 90% of every dollar raised through the sale of your donated items was used for adult education and employment programs and 3.5 million pounds of textiles was kept out of our local landfills. Total economic impact of Goodwill of Lorraine County Employment Services is $29.2 million. I'm also waiting on a report from one of our other people that worked for Goodwill and she had some really good statistics on what they have done over the last year, so hopefully I'll have that for you next week. So, when you're donating goods, remember, you know, Salvation Army, Goodwill, those boxes that you see out there, you know where that money goes, some of those other ones, not so sure. So, and you also get a tax write-off for when you take it to a Goodwill location. Saturday, I, yeah, Saturday, I attended the Lorraine County Deputy Steak Fry, it was a nice event, really, really tasty steaks, nice event. And then on Sunday, Ed and Renee, Ed Noack from Sugar Ridge and Ed's Transmission got married, congratulations to them, they've been together for, I think, 10 years or so, so they finally tied the knot. They had a little fishbowl with two fish in it and it said, "Two less fish in the sea", it was really cute. Anyways, I sat next to Jeff Allgram, which is the pastor who married them, and he's going to send out to all the local pastors to let them know that we have an opportunity for people to come and say a prayer before our meeting, so that way, because I know Teresa was going to send it out, it was going to cost like 900 or some dollars just to send out to all the different churches, so hopefully we'll get some more participation and thank you, Paul, for coming in and doing that for us today. End of my report.
This week, a lot of work involved, the solid waste. You saw that we went to new classifications in Item 15, just cleaning up the work, the work's changed over the 15 years in responsibilities of the employees, there's no change in actual personnel, one person retiring sadly, pochore after 20-plus years, but it was just a fix-up in what their actual responsibilities are because there's been different changes in the plans and we had to align the employees' job descriptions with that. But we also had our Solid Waste Committee meeting yesterday, a lot of discussion, we're working on our plan. Keith, you want to give us an update at all on the issues we were talking about yesterday as the Director of our Solid Waste? Revenues are picking back up, which is nice to hear after a major slowdown after the cold winter, and we'll be moving forward on getting our plan ready to go out in the fall for ratification to all the communities. Go ahead, Keith.
Yeah, we're just finished up Section 3 of the new plan, moving on to Section 4 now. There's nine sections in the plan, we're moving forward on a lot of areas, things being changed in this plan, maybe our funding stream and how we collect our money, we're looking into that. The organics facility will have a large impact on what we do and how our expenditure's done over the next five years, so we're moving forward with this plan, it's looking very promising, it really is.
It was nice to see Illyria going to the cart system, the increase in the recycling countywide.
One community left.
One community left.
Correct. Anything else? Any questions?
No, that will do it, thank you, Keith.
Good steaks, right, Keith? I saw you at the Deputy Steak Fry.
Yeah, I was there.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Oh.
Done with my report.
All right, great. Well, first thing I want to wish a happy birthday to an old boy I met last week at Dunham Sports, looking at a basketball hoop, and the kid just knew everything about basketball, telling me which way to go and where to save money and actually referred me to an online site in order to save $200, so I thought that was great. So, I just want to say happy birthday, Max, belated birthday. Yes, I was at the Steak Fry, just missed you, I got there around 7:40, I just came from a beach wedding, so I was kind of in beach gear attending there, great food and always a good cause for the deputies. What, like now, like to bring up the judge, he contacted me, said he wanted to come up here and talk, right, Judge? You want to?
Judge Meraldi.
Meraldi?
Which one?
I didn't realize I'd be getting an opportunity to speak to you today, but thank you for that opportunity. I used to practice law in the old courthouse before you-
Judge, for those who don't know, you need to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm Jim Meraldi, General Division Judge of the Common Police Court of Lorraine County.
Thank you.
I used to practice law in the old courthouse where our probation department is now working, and there'd been complaints that the working conditions there weren't very good, there were some security issues, and I know the judges have been pushing, I know I've talked to some of you privately about opening up the 5th floor of the Justice Center where all the resources are there and moving probation over there. I knew that there were some problems with the old courthouse, but I practiced there for, you know, over 30 years and I thought I knew that, you know, I knew what it looked like and what the situation would be. I went over there yesterday and I was appalled and I'm ashamed of myself that I didn't walk across the street years ago when we heard about some complaints, but I knew our court administrator had contacted the Commissioners to try to do something about it. What I saw over there wouldn't be appropriate for a probation department in a third-world country. If what I was told I was seeing, I saw lead paint off all the walls just peeling, I saw asbestos, I saw black mold, I saw carpet that was curled with stains, I saw elevators that didn't work, I didn't see any way there'd be ADA compliance with anyone who comes over there in a wheelchair. I wouldn't put, I wouldn't let anyone work there. And so, since I have this opportunity today, I'd like to invite any of the Commissioners to come over and look and walk the building. I know it changed my mind and made, now makes it a huge priority with me and the rest of the judges here, we need to do something, and rehabbing that old courthouse, I don't think you could do it for under $10 million, which would be a bad use of money when funds are low, but I know that the judges want to work with the county Commissioners and make it happen over on the 5th floor, do something to get those people out of there. It is unhealthy and I think we're opening ourselves up to some liabilities for some future health-related claims, it's horrible. If you go over and see it, you won't have to take my word for it, you'll know firsthand. Thank you for letting me talk.
Yeah, Judge, I actually, I was over there, I brought in a firm to take a look at it to see what it would cost to go through and renovate it to get it to today's standards, having their engineer with them and just individuals that got a lot of experience in construction and renovations, his estimate was between 10 to 15 million.
10 to 15 million.
So, there are a lot of issues there, you know, I've stated it before, I think going over to the Justice Center, putting it on the 5th floor, making it a true hall of justice makes sense.
Yeah, we have those people over in our courthouse anyway for pre-trials before they're put on probation, we're used to the traffic of them, those folks being there, you've got security already at the front door, you don't have to reinvent the wheel with a lot of things, you've got infrastructure already there. I hope that going over and looking at the place, it'll change some people's minds about where we go next with this problem. We can solve it if we work together, all right, thanks.
Appreciate it, Judge.
Yes.
You have to come up and you have to introduce yourself.
I'll relinquish the floor.
Well, I want the judge to be able to answer, so I want to-
Well, go up there to the mic so we can, everybody can hear you, oh, there you go.
Jerry knows his way around.
Jerry Donovan, taxpayer. I have only a question, Judge, and with all due respect, why the hell do you have to invite the stewards of the taxpayers' money up to check over and look after the property that they're supposed to be looking after? That's my question. Why has it been allowed to go for so damn long that it's going to cost 10 to 15 million dollars to correct? Of course, Lorraine is a very rich county, so that should be no problem for us to put on an extra levy or some damn thing like that there. The judge, and all the judges obviously are here for the same purpose, and if the judges have to take their time out to come and do the Commissioners' job by inviting them over to look at the property you're supposed to look after, you should be damn well ashamed of yourselves.
Mr. Donovan, just for clarification, I was at the courthouse, I went over with the probation department director less than a year ago, and it wasn't like the best workable as far as offices, it's not, it's meant to be a courthouse, not really offices, but never was pointed out any type of asbestos or lead paint or black mold or anything of that nature, just that it wasn't a very conducive atmosphere for a, for office space.
Commissioner, that's sort of what I had in my mind, the picture I had because I'd practiced there, but I tell you, having just gone over there yesterday, I don't know what you saw a year ago, but it looks like a war has occurred.
Well, it wasn't even quite a year ago, how long, maybe six months ago?
It's horrible.
Horrible.
It's deplorable.
Well-
So, I don't have an answer, Jerry, but we're here now.
We asked for a list of things that needed to be done, Mr. Cordez, did you ever get that list of repairs or maintenance issues that?
I saw yesterday a book this thick that the probation department had, Beth Swalina, said these are the repair orders that we have sent over to have done and they've done maybe this. We've even asked for paint, we'll do it ourselves, we don't even get any paint, they promised us.
You should've got a copy on that, they sent it to me and forwarded it on to everybody.
Fixing that building is not going to be the answer.
No, I never, no, I don't think anybody thought that was the answer.
Do you want a response to your question?
Yes, please.
The list we got was three pages, not a book. The asbestos has been abated in the building, people assume it's asbestos, the paint, I don't know how anybody would know it's lead paint without having it tested, it hasn't. We brought in the Health Department, we have some mold issues, it's a sandstone building, any sandstone building has moisture issues, and it had it all the time it was being used and we were always combating it. So, as far as black mold, we have not determined if there's any black mold, the kind that people get all terrified about in the building, but there's been some minor mold issues and we've taken care of it. The, just this week, we got word that they took a storeroom and converted it to office space without letting us know, so we could go in there and remediate the space and change ceiling tiles, and they set up office space in there and then they turn around and say, "Look at the hideous conditions in here." We didn't get any word that they were taking the storeroom and turning it into office space for people, they started moving stuff away from the walls, there were some areas that needed to be remediated, and we didn't have an opportunity to do that. So, I've ordered Karen Davis to bring an IH in, do an inspection again of the building, the Health Department's been there.
IH.
Industrial Hygienist.
Thank you.
The Health Department's been there, they've been through the building, they haven't found anything with the building, the Health, the city's been there, they haven't found anything with the building except minor issues that we've responded to. With all due respect, Judge, I'm not sure who's telling you that, but I'm more than willing to bring the inspectors back in.
If you would do that, because what I saw yesterday and what I was told, and I, as I prefaced, this is what I was told, and it looked terrible. Paint was peeling, it looked like friable material around the pipes that's usually asbestos, the walls were crumbling.
It usually is, Judge, and, but we've remediated that building a long time ago. Now, there is lag, there is casing on the pipes, but I'll tell you, the spaces that, those spaces were not supposed to be used, and that was part of the problem because the assigned spaces were upkept. In order to reduce costs, we didn't use this, like, the 3rd floor, we did not go up there and do work on the 3rd floor, in fact, we didn't even have most of the lights on and bulbed and ballasted up there. So, more spaces are going to be used and we need to deal with those more spaces in order to also let Jerry know when he spoke about why we let the building get there, where they're talking about a complete rehabilitation of a hundreds of years old building. The reason the Justice Center was built is because it wasn't really practical to put the money into the courthouse for a courthouse, but as far as some office space on some of the additional floors, that is still acceptable for office space. Now, if there's issues with the building, we'll go in and we'll take care of it. But everybody keeps making all these statements, Judge, and I don't have a book this thick, I asked for the list and it was three pages.
I'll get you the book because I saw it yesterday, and there's not a person on this panel that would move their office into that building, not a one of you would put any of your employees there, that's all I got to say.
You've been over there?
Come on over and take a look at it now.
You've walked through it, raise your hand, in the last-
With their eyes open.
Oh, I haven't been there in the last two years.
How can you sit there and say that if you've walked through that building in the last three months? It's a disaster.
Judge, Judge, you gotta come up here, you gotta do it up here.
Judge John Meraldi, I want to second what Judge James Meraldi said, and Mr. Cordez, I don't know how there could only be three repair orders for that building, that building is a mess. One thing that wasn't mentioned is the air quality in that building. I have two daughters with respiratory issues, I wouldn't allow them to work in there. There are, there are paint chips falling, there are asbestos pipes, we're not asking the Commissioners to touch that building in terms of making a few more offices available, people should be out of that building. Because it is an old courthouse, that is not usable, that is why we're willing to work with you to build out the 5th floor. We've even, you know, we're interested in helping with some of the cost to some extent, but, look, all five judges, Judge Betlesky has a trial going on, that's the only reason he's not here, we're here in unison. We would be more than happy to walk through that building with the Commissioners and anyone else at this bench and get a new, fresh look at it because I think you need to see it again, and these probation officers do not make a lot of money, they are, we are asking them to work in deplorable conditions and then we invite them over to our beautiful Justice Center to see our offices, and then they go back into that pit and it's just not right, we need to fix it, and I want to second Judge Meraldi's comment, I am totally willing to work with you all toward a solution, but we've got to move. This has been, this has been hanging around for years, we've got to settle this.
Well, I know you guys are offering, what, 1.5, 1.7 million?
Yeah, half the cost to redo it.
Half the cost and all over runs.
Judge, by the way, just for clarification, I didn't say three work orders, I said it had three pages, so, I understand, I understand, I just wanted to clarify on that and-
That's what was sent to us, Tom had received from Judge Berger, Tim Looby, three pages, and there were some highlighted ones that weren't done, I went through the list.
Really, yeah, and I don't want to get caught in the technicality of how many work orders there are, again, the invite is, let's go over and look at this thing together to get a fresh new perspective on it and let's move towards solving this problem. Thank you for the-
Yeah, and one thing that I'm concerned about with this too, and the reason I'm pushing for it to go over to the 5th, our 5th floor of the Justice Center is more security issues too. We've had break-ins into the different buildings, to me, it makes more sense to put it in the 5th floor, and while the Supreme Court may not mandate that that building has to be secured, in the future, they may, so.
Commissioner Williams, that's an excellent point, you walk up maybe six to eight steps into that courthouse to a center rotunda where there are 10 or 12 chairs to handle over 300 to 500 felons for probationary services, no metal detector, the secretary that sits at a glass window, it's plastic, I mean, there is no security, and if it's, if probation's moved to the 5th floor, you have security in place already with the deputies. Commissioner Kokoski, to address an issue that you mentioned to me privately, which was whether we had concerns about all of those probationers coming into the courthouse, that's not an issue, there, we have criminal days, three days a week, the building's set up to handle that, they'd be on a designated floor, so it's, that is not a concern, and I know that's not a concern to any of the judges who are here. So, thank you for the opportunity to address the Commission.
Come on up, Judge.
I think that-
You know, we can banny back-
Judge, you have to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Jim Burge, I'm a common police judge across the street. I tell you what, we can banny back and forth about putting a Band-Aid on a bullet hole, here's what I'm willing to do, I will move my office space over to the courthouse, I invite the Commissioners to join me, and we'll see who lasts the longest, and if you can't do it, then maybe we can come back over and negotiate, but I am willing, starting any day you want to, to move my digs over there and we'll just all sit together. Thank you.
Thanks, Judge. Tom? It's your public meeting. It's your public comment.
Yeah, I actually want to bring Paul back up, Paul Hassan, talk about a event that he has coming up. I figured we'd go on to positive now. Yeah. Email Hassan, address, you want to give, should I give the address?
No, you're fine, you've already introduced yourself.
Okay, anyway, real quick here, in spite of, you know, all the things that are going on, I hope that, that we can have some resolution in this issue, but I want to let the- to let the commission know that we're doing a national campaign called Taking Back the Streets, and basically, this, this campaign is to, across the country, and as well as Lorraine County, is to go back into the community to engage our young people. This, this is a holistic, holistic issue, which needs a holistic solution, because we're talking about a holistic problem with our young people, our young men, and what our approach is to go back to the streets with information, with support, you know, with, with compassion, and, and showing that, that we, we truly care, because, you know, you know, we can stay in the mosque, and we can stay in the churches, we can stay in the synagogues, but as we know, the, the many leaders that came before us, you know, Christ himself, Martin the King, Malcolm, they all was in the streets, so our approach is to go back to the streets to, to really approach our young men, really let them know that there's a better way, if not, you know, this, the carnage is going to continue to happen, it's not much been happening lately, but it's starting to get hot outside, and, and really it's going to escalate, but that's the approach called Taking Back the Streets. The campaign would kick off by the second week in July, and we just asked the county to support, and any of the commissioners want to join. Before I conclude, I was talking to Commissioner Tom Williams, when we go into the streets and, when young people, you know, see our elected officials and government, it means something. I mean, it really means something, I mean, it, it means that, you know, that you really care, and, and, and we hope, and I know you're busy scheduled, we're not asking you to, to do many of them with us, but if you could, just go back into the, to the community and show our young people, you know, that we really, really, really support them, and maybe, and this is not, you know, this is not the, certainly a, a solution for all the problems in our community, but certainly this is a start, and hopefully we'll get the opportunity to make this happen.
Yeah, well, you know, the one where we had, we're at the library, we had the one individual, a young man, that was very passionate, and upset about government.
Yeah.
And we actually had a good dialogue, I think that may have helped him, was kind of seeing a, a different light in getting more involved, so appreciate all you do, and thanks for coming up.
Again, I think the commissioners, you, you, you've always been supportive of whatever we do, Commissioner Laurie, and Ted, and the torment days, and the things like, we really appreciate, you know, the, in the past, and you always supported us, and we'll continue, you know, to engage and, and, and do what we have to do to make the reality in terms of our young people really being the kind of human beings that the Creator wants them to be. So thank you again, and peace be upon you.
All right, Jim.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Jim Sloan, live at 1504 Park Avenue, Alaria, Ohio. I'm sorry I didn't get in before our brother here, while we were talking about the old courthouse across the street.
Excuse me, Jim, is this for public comment, or Tom, is this part of your report?
No, no.
He can, he can be part of my report, I've talked to him on this.
I can do, I can do whatever, I can sit back down, because I'm not going to...
No, you're fine, yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
Until physical therapy time. Okay.
We've had talks about it, so go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, okay. Yesterday I had the opportunity to go through the old courthouse, and I would like to tell you guys as commissioners, don't take Judge Berger up on that offer, because that's a bad deal. I have not been treated probably, I'm going to take a guess, in 25 years for asthma, when I walked out of there yesterday, I couldn't hardly breathe because of right here. I had to go to my car, get an atomizer, and I had to use it because of the quality of air in that building. We looked at pipes that were, it was a sewage, sewage line that had a leak in it, in the ceiling. We saw some of the most disgusting, filthy things you've ever seen, there are feces on the floor, hasn't been cleaned up, and I, I don't even know when it, when it was there, there's all ki, there's, there's all kinds of, yeah, believe me, we've got pictures, so I can tell you. So, when, when I'm standing here today to tell you, as a citizen, as a taxpayer of Lorraine County, although I am a union official, but if I, me personally, if I was here as a union official, and I was over there, and I represented those people, which I don't, I'd have them walk out, that's how bad it is. And I, and here's, I'm going to read this, so it's not a surprise to you, I'm going to read you a letter that Harry Williamson, the president of the AFL, and I wrote, and this will be going to the newspapers today. "To the elected officials of Lorraine County, this letter is being written with a very, with a very concerned and heavy heart. We find it very disturbing and disgusting that we would even have debates and arguments over the subject that is, and has commissioners and administrators of Lorraine County debating over filthy and unhealthy working conditions. This subject, this subject has been brought to these individuals' attention as long, for a long period of time, and to what degree it has been corrected, it has none to little. Ignoring or, or pretending that these conditions do not exist does not help rectify the problem and only proves that you condone this problem, and it is unacceptable. With the number of buildings and spaces in Lorraine County that are vacant, such as the County Justice Center and other buildings or property, it would be a very viable solution to move the county employees subjected to these conditions to be transferred to one of these locations. The Lorraine County Common Pleas Judge, James Berger, has brought this subject up and should be commended for his compassion for attempting to protect these workers from this, but instead, he is being ridiculed and condemned. The commissioners and county administrators should hold their heads down in shame for allowing this. I see James Berger as an advocate for working men and women. Better yet, let all those that support the unhealthy and filthy conditions work in this environment with human waste and filth. I would venture to predict that they would have a different opinion on this matter. We are urging Lorraine County elected officials to keep politics and personal vendettas out of this discussion when it relates to the topic over the health and safety of employees involved in this distribution of work in this environment. Work with Judge Berger and the other judges, who have common sense when it comes to the time to protect the safe and healthy working conditions and environments of our employees here in, here in the county of Lorraine County. Signed, Harry Williams, President of the AFL-CIO Lorraine County, Jim Sloan, President of UAW, UAW CAP. And I'm going to tell you, it was, it was one of the most disgusting days of, hour, hour and 10 minutes I spent over there, and you guys really need to go over there and take a look at that.
Before you sit down, I, I, I agree with you on some aspects of what you said in your letter, they should go somewhere, but the only place that they're willing to go is the fifth floor, even though we've found other alternatives, less, lot less costly alternatives, such as the JTP building over there, which would cost about eight, $900,000, and compare to, to, to $3 million, so that's, that's the issue, we can't decide, because they want, it's like my way or the highway with the judges, they want the fifth floor, that's all they'll accept, even though we may have other alternatives that don't cost as much, and that's why we're all, have different opinions, he says fifth floor, I say, you know, the JTP building, he's just saying, we'll leave them where they are until we figure this out.
A good, a good, a good example, Laurie, would be the people that worked for, for you, Ted, and, and, and Tom, the three commissioners, and I, since I know all of you, forgive me for not saying the three, three commissioners, and, but let's just say we take all the people that worked for you, or worked, or, or that report to you, that you ask questions for, let's take them and let's just, let's just move them down, someplace down on East Broad, East Broad Street, and have them come back up here every day, and, and to report to you, and then go back to their office and come back up here. It's the same thing that we've got going now, these folks, even though it's a short walk across, everybody's in the same building, it only makes sense to put all of your revenues into, into one, one building, because you're, you're going to save cost. When you walk into that building, I believe, if I was told correctly, there's probably 12 or 21 chairs, I, I've got it written down, and, and there's probably 2,000 people that come in there, you would want them in a safe environment. Eventually, you're going to have to put metal detectors up there, you're going to have to put some, some folks out there with guns, because they, you know, the folks that work there need protection.
They do carry guns, I believe.
Uh, well, if they carry guns, it, that, that would be a good thing. But, you know, over at the, over at the, over at the new building, they have metal detectors, I go through there quite often, you know, it's a secure building, they can go from the fifth floor to what, whatever, if they're all going to be on the fifth floor, they go to the judges' floor, it's just a matter of, a real quick, it, it's called efficiency, it's saving money. You can rent a building, I don't know, do you own the building?
We own the building, it would cost about $900,000, and if the judges have 1.5 million, it, it wouldn't cost us anything, but they, they have to deem it appropriate, and they don't consider it appropriate to go to that other building, even though the footprint is identical.
Yeah, but the mayor of Alaria doesn't want to go there, because she doesn't want to transfer that traffic down Broad Street.
Well, that's, 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 that's the old style center, right?
And be respectful to the leadership here in the city of Alaria as well.
It's the old what?
That's the old style center, the, on, on, next to the barber shops, is that what you're talking about?
Right, yeah, right there.
That's the old style center, that's the old style center.
And I've agreed that I really don't want to put it downtown, and I've spoke with the administration.
And, and you know what, you know what?
They've got a plan for their downtown, they're working on it, they got $75,000 for a study from Noak, so I'm aware of that.
Right.
And coming from a downtown business guy, that they put probationers and sexual offenders coming out of jail next to my business, I understand those pains, so...
Right, and, and it's also, it's bad for business, it's also bad for those, the barber shops and the businesses and the people that want to create businesses.
Foot traffic, it, maybe people need to get a haircut.
No, I don't think so.
They gotta go to court, they gotta get a haircut.
I think, I think, I think you might see iron bar, bars on their doors, and you might see them carrying guns, and that wouldn't be a good thing. And, and if you want to talk about cost and efficiency, you know, we entrust our money to you guys to do with it, you know, very, to, to work with it very efficiently, and I think by putting these people on the fifth floor, it's, it's an efficient way, it's a one-time, let's take care of this, let's put everybody there, we don't have to worry about it. Now, this building across the street, I don't know what, I don't know who's going to fix it, I think the county owns it, I think you guys are, are the, are the owners of it.
Our hope is just to...
We're custodians.
You're custodians, after 10 years, you own it.
No.
No?
I think we're custodians.
You're custodians.
We got through a will, I believe it's actually the city of Alaria, we revert back to the city of Alaria, the county didn't want it, there's a long, similar to what the Green Acres property was, remember, we went through that whole struggle of getting rid of that, Jim, so...
Well, this, this building across the street, it, right now, it, it's unreparable, and, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a mess, and, and you guys really need to go over and take a look at it. Yesterday, I walked out of there shaking my head, I could not believe what I saw, I could not believe the conditions people were asked to work in, and, and Commissioner Kokoski, Commissioner Kalo, and Commissioner Williams, you three would not want to work in those, in those conditions, you absolutely would not, I would, I wouldn't want anybody, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even ask you guys to go over there and work over there, that's how bad it is, that's how bad it is.
Jim, I just want to, you know, I heard your letter, but, you know, I actually brought in, like, the Toledo Blade, they did a story on this several years ago because of the conditions of that building, and, you know, I took a lot of heat, because I said we either board it up, tear it down, or renovate it, those are the three options that I, I see in that building, so I just want to kind of clarify, I agree with you on the conditions of it, I think we need to do something with it, and again, I've been on record that it should go over to the fifth floor, so...
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's all I got to say, I, and, like I say, I, I really hope you three go take a look at it, go take a look at it with the judges, so they can, you all can look at the same things, it's not that you looked at one thing, someone looked at something else. I, I found it, I, you know, I found it very deplorable.
Thanks. And my report? Can we go into the hearings we have to hold?
The second public hearing with Linda Blanchett, Community Development.
We'll get to you, Terry and Jose, after this one.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, everyone. This public hearing is being conducted on behalf of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners in order to make application for the CDBG Community Development Allocation Program, Grant Program. We are now referring it with program years instead of fiscal years, so I'll be saying PY occasionally. The first public hearing was held on March the 12th, 2014, where the program and general guidelines for application were explained. Also during that presentation, the eligibility requirements and application process were discussed. During the second public hearing, I will present the basic grant requirements and proposed projects to be submitted in this application. The guidelines for the application are that Lorraine County has permitted up to 20% of the allocation to administer the program, and fair housing costs are included in the 20%. The county cannot exceed 15% of the allocation to administer the, the, for the public service projects. Lorraine County is limited to no more than four projects in any one year, and fair housing and administration are not considered an activity in that manner. Counties that may include a city that received a direct allocation for the FY10, 11, and 12 program years will be required to undertake at least one project in that city in 2013, 14, and 15. There's no set dollar amount required, and the city of North Ridgeville is that particular city. Within this application, they are applying for $42,970 for their project. The three national objectives that must be met are benefiting low and moderate income persons, addressing slum and blight, meeting a particular urgent need. The county's PY14 Community Development Allocation is $276,000, which is 14,000 less than last year's. Notification and applications for the ability, availability of the CDBG funds were mailed to the townships, villages, and cities on February 12th, 2014. The applications submitted were reviewed for eligibility under the CDBG guidelines and for compliance with the national objectives. This year, Lorraine County Community Development received six funding requests, and as I said, we can only pick four. Today, I'm presenting the projects for this grant, and it's our desire, following the outcomes of the public hearing, to submit to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners an application for approval on June the 12th. The application will then be submitted to Ohio Development Services Agency prior to the June 20th deadline. The proposed activities, all six of these activities will be funded with the PY2014 CDBG Community Development Allocation Grant Funds, so I don't have to say it for each one. The first activity is a street improvement activity, $53,500. This is for the paving of John Street and Camden Court in Kipton Township, the national objective is LMI Service Benefit Area. The public service activity is $40,000 for the Neighborhood Alliance to conduct a meals program, and the national objective is limited clientele. This meals program will serve all of Lorraine County except Avon, Avon Lake, Alaria, Lorraine, North Ridgeville, Sheffield Lake, Sheffield Township, Sheffield Village, as these communities have their own meals program already in place. Parks and Recreation Facilities Activity, $42,970. This is for the city of North Ridgeville, they are going to install walkways at the Shady Park, Shady Drive Park in North Ridgeville, and the national objective is linear feet of walkway. The fourth project is sewer facility improvements, $84,330. This is in the Edgewood Drive area of Carlisle Township, the national objective is LMI Service Benefit Area, and this is to install, install the second phase of storm sewers there. We did the first phase a few years back. Of course, we have fair housing, which is a requirement, requirement of the grant, $10,000 to implement the county's fair housing program, and $45,200 for administration, and it's requested to administer the CDBG projects. And all of these projects must be completed by December 31st, 2015. May I now ask for any questions?
Any comments from the public or questions from the board in regards to CDBG second public hearing? Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Discussion. Oh, Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Koskowsky?
Aye.
Aye.
Now a motion to approve the application?
Yes.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Koskowsky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
We will have our hearing on our veterans' budget, Mr. Stone?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Terry Stone, I'm the Executive Director of Lorraine County Veterans Service Office. First and foremost, I'd like to wish all the fathers in the audience an early Happy Father's Day, and it's coming up this weekend, and, and thank the service of all the veterans that we have in the office, too. Morning.
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 We concur.
We concur. I submitted our, our budget as, as required by the county, and I know you've all looked at it, and we're here to answer any questions, concerns, that you might have on what we have. submitted.
Sure. Can I bring my Budget Director, Lisa Hobart, because I heard I've been going through some questions on this one? Probably the first one, a couple new line items, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Starting, the building rent, one point three million dollars. The Commissioners are in charge of your housing.
Correct.
We're not going to put you, we're not going to put you in the courthouse, we promise.
No, that, we, I don't think we would go for that either.
But I see that as a new line item, item that's never been there before, and it's always been the Commissioners are responsible for the housing of Veterans Services.
And we understand that. That was sent to me, I mean, I sent it back exactly the same way it was sent to me, it might have been an error in somebody's, you know, typing or something that that should not have been there, but I would have put that one point three million somewhere. The issue we have, and I hate to sound redundant like we've been listening to all morning, but our facility where our offices are at are not up to standards that we need to respectfully handle and take care of the veterans of Lorraine County the way they deserve to be taken care of. I know that everybody got a letter from a visit that Mr. Gurrell from the Department of Veterans Services had made to our office, and with your permission, I'd like to read that, that letter, you know, copy of it to the audience.
Sure.
It was addressed to all, all three Commissioners, they all three got one. "I recently had the pleasure to visit the Lorraine County Veterans Service Office and meet with the staff. While it was very good to visit the office, I found an area which causes some concern, namely the lack of adequate surroundings necessary to conduct the personal business of veterans. America's veterans are returning home following service in many extremely hazardous areas of the world. When they approach the county Veterans Service Officer seeking earned benefits from the Department of Veterans Affairs, they must be asked questions of an extremely sensitive nature. The answers to some of these questions must be kept in strict confidence. Personal, financial, and medical information are to be protected according to federal and state laws and regulations. Were I to visit the Lorraine County Veterans Service Office in its current physical configuration, I would not feel this need for confidentiality could be met with a reasonable degree of satisfaction. I request the Lorraine County Commissioners, together with the Veterans Service Commission, look into this area of concern. I ask you to imagine, how comfortable would you be answering extremely personal questions about situations faced by veterans? Some of these could include extreme mental anguish discovered in a combat environment, survivor's guilt, or individual assault, whether physical or sexual in nature. Ohio's veterans and Lorraine County's veterans should be confident their response will be safeguarded and not unintentionally overheard by anyone other than a qualified Veterans Service Officer. I appreciate the Lorraine County Commissioners' continued support of the Lorraine County Veterans Service Commission and the veterans of your county. Thank you for your timely assistance in this matter. Sincerely, Timothy C. Gurrell, Director, Ohio Department of Veterans Services." After that letter was received by the Commissioners, I did send a letter from our commission requesting that we'd sit down and start discussing as a group how to eliminate the situation, and so far, that has not happened, I know everybody's busy. So the reason that we wanted to put that money in there and guarantee was, we, we are willing to use that money, which is there for veterans, to build or find new facilities for our offices. As the judges had said, we'll say, we're willing to work with you and, and do this together.
Well, haven't we, Terry? Didn't you look at some facilities? I mean, over the years, we've worked with Sam, and I don't know where the, the Commissioners or all that, but we have shown you facilities.
We, uh...
Ups and downs, and yes and nos, and splits on your commission, similar to what we've done here.
Right.
In regards to facilities.
A few of us have looked at some, but, like I say, we'd like to look at it as groups and sit down and work on it together, and I think Mr. Batunas has some he'd like to say.
Before you, before you go farther, the, the current location, is it just a matter of its cubicles and not full walls where there's not enough privacy? Is it something that we can just have like an office that they can go into?
If you were to...
A closed-door office?
If you were to turn, try to turn those cubicles in the office, right now, I've got one cubicle that has two employees in it. If you were to put up walls, I'd hate to see how small that office would be.
Well, we've got additional space, or Commissioner Williams actually brought this up a couple of weeks ago, he was over there, space no longer being used by Job and Family Services.
Yeah, we actually, we did a walkthrough with the commission prior to you taking the, your position, and there's multiple offices available.
Well, we, we would like to, as a group, between our Veterans Service Commissioners and, and your, your group, you know, to, to work on this together and see what would come up, you know, as, as a good legitimate plan.
Yeah, we may need more space, and the, the other issue is the services that are there at Job and Family Services, a lot of the veterans use those other services as well as Veterans Services.
Some, some of them do, but I have personally had veterans come to me and say they will not come to our office because they don't want their vehicle to be seen in the parking lot where the welfare office is. There's a stigmatism that they have, and they're proud people. They, they don't want anybody to think that they're going to welfare, or they're going to child support, or they're having that issue. They want to come to the Veterans Service Office and discuss their issue with veterans and veterans alone, and it's, so we're, we're pushing towards that. We, we need to work together and try to find a different location, whether we move into an existing facility, whether we use our extra money we have left in our budget to build another facility somewhere in the central part of, of the Lorraine County area. We're, we're willing to sit down and work out any kind of plan we can.
Well, you know, that's interesting, because I spoke with some veterans and some of your board members, too, about putting a satellite office like in the southern part of the county, so we could reach out to veterans down there. And then giving those individuals who don't want to be seen at that location, another option to go there in order to process their paperwork. So, I would be open to do something like that, but I don't think we need a one point three million dollar facility for it. I think keeping that facility at the Job and Family Services, where you have a one network, where you can work together with those other departments, really makes sense. I mean, that's what the majority of the Veterans Services throughout the county have.
The other thing, too, if you have one in the south and then maybe one at Valor Home for another satellite office for people up north, maybe something like that might work out. Something we need to talk about.
That may be a staffing issue, that could be a staffing issue, too, so.
Just that, and Sam would probably know, I think the Valor Home, they talked about doing that, but I think that space is now rented out, correct, Sam?
You can't talk out there.
Okay.
But there might be space available.
Okay.
Sam, Sam, you know the rules, you got to come up to a microphone to speak. It's a public meeting, we got to do that, you got to introduce yourself. You see, Lorraine County got a very good rating from our newspapers in the state of Ohio in regards to open records and making sure everything's available.
Public meetings and public records.
Public meetings, and so we want to keep that going.
If I might mention, Commissioner...
Okay, my name is Sam Batunas.
Hang on, Sam, we're going to let Sam Felton speak here real quick, because Commissioner Williams asked him a question.
Two minutes. Now, you were asking me, were there availability of space for a satellite office? More than likely, there is. I know we've completed the task of utilizing all the rooms that have been pledged as far as that goes, but I'm quite sure we could find adequate space for a satellite office if there is an immediate need for it, which clearly, by this discussion, there must be.
I think that'd be up to Veterans Service Commissioners, so, Sam, that's not something that we have. That's a suggestion from Commissioner Williams, but that would be up to Sam and Jose and Don.
Okay, well, what I would, what I would suggest also humbly is that, once these discussions actually get underway, why don't we see about getting a coalition of veterans to either walk to these sites with you to see what they would be comfortable with? Because it is about the veterans.
Yeah.
I think I'd be comfortable letting their Executive Director and the board make that determination, they could decide how they wanted to handle those options.
Okay.
I don't think it's our job necessarily to get in the middle of what these guys provide as a service. They're appointed by the judge to do those things, I think that's the responsibility best to discuss with also, because you know the veterans' needs and what they best feel with. Is that agreeable?
Well, Sam, you can come in as my expert.
Yeah. Right. Thank you.
Go ahead, Sam. Batunas.
My name is Sam Batunas, I'm a member of the Veterans Service Commission. Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Cordez, Mr. Ennis, Teresa, I know you all. Let's clarify a point. Fifty-nine oh one point oh seven of the Ohio Revise Code states, "The Board of County Commissioners, upon the recommendation or approval of the Veterans Service Commission, may, may provide suitable office space." Does not give you the authority to unilaterally tell us that you're going to give us, as I think was sort of intimated when this discussion started. We have been shown, over several years now, this conversation has been going on, several different locations, none of them have ever come to fruition. They've always been, well, let's jury rig this, or let's patch that, or if we do this, could you go in there? We would like a facility, primarily a standalone facility, where these veterans can be treated with the dignity and respect that they deserve. The other day, I had an opportunity to drive by a recycling center on Abbey Road. How many have driven by that place? It is a very, very nice-looking facility, and it kind of indicates to me that the County Commissioners are more interested in providing a nice facility for recycled material than for their veterans. I, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm saying that's what it appears to be. If they can provide that kind of facility, why can't they provide something for us? The one point three million dollars we are entitled to, it was put into the budget to bring to conclusion this ongoing debate about what kind of facility the Veterans Service Commission is going to provide their veterans to come to, so that they, they can sit down and discuss their problems without having to worry about people overhearing it, or people stumbling in on it, or people observing where they're going or where they're not going. Commissioners, it's about time this came to an end. We have never, never asked for excessive amounts of money. We have never quibbled about turning it back over to you when we finished the year. This time, I think it's time we came together as the Board of County Commissioners and a Board of Veterans Service Commissioners, and said, enough is enough, let's find a suitable arrangement that these veterans can live with. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Jose Torres, Commissioner of Lorraine County Veterans Commission. I just got one thing to say. With this money and us moving into a new building, this is what's going to happen. We can still move that from different line items if it's not all used, which you guys don't understand are what's happening here soon. This is for 2015. They are downsizing the military, every branch of service. We are going to have an influx from the current twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty veterans we have in the county. They're going to come home with nowhere to go. We have veterans currently, right now, as you guys know, in Lorraine over at Tent City. They refuse to come in for help, veterans, because they don't want to be seen in, over by that building. They rather choose to live in a tent. With those coming back, and everybody that lost, there's a lot more, with these kids coming back nowadays, that are, when they start downsizing and pulling out. They did four, five, six, seven tours. We need the proper facility to have them there where we can bring in a psychiatrist or whatever from the VA in a private office in one facility where they can sit there and discuss everything, get done talking with that person, and walk over and file their claims. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jose.
Yeah, one thing that was brought up to me, and I think you guys know, I, I support the veterans so hardly, is doing a better outreach for it. We've had discussions on this, there was talk about getting a mobile unit, putting it with equipment, so if you have to go to like a Tent City, being able to drive over there and do that. If there's a veterans event going on, being able to drive to that event and reaching out to them. Getting a, just pulled up your, the website, going through, updating your website, changing your, your social media, where you can actually do advertising and do more outreach in order to get to the veterans, because I believe right now, there's about twenty-seven thousand veterans in Lorraine County, and I think we reached about nine thousand.
Twenty, as of 2013, twenty-six thousand nine hundred and two is, is the numbers they have on the GDX.
So, going out and, you know, coming up with ways to actually spend more money to reach out to them, to get them the services that they provide. I agree with you, we need to have better space. I wouldn't want to go in and talk about my financials or my health if I know that somebody I know is in the next cubicle.
Or even somebody you don't know.
Right. But just having an office space, so I agree with you, we should either put you in office space or build you offices and have it where it can accommodate the people on your staff. What I was, I guess disappointed was, I didn't see really an aggressive movement to go out and do more outreach for veterans and trying to get them to come and learn about the benefits that they, they don't know that they have. Or maybe they're just too proud because they're, they're doing well, and they don't need the benefits, or they just don't understand them. That's where I would like to see the money go. I'd like to see it go through, get you the privacy that you need, but also go towards a better outreach.
I think you'll, you'll notice, too, our line item for vehicle replacement, right now, I'm almost finished up with, with purchasing a handy, a wheelchair accessible van, which we don't have, to help handle some of the wheelchair veterans in the county, instead of spending that money with a company called Provider Ride, which takes it out of the county. As much of that stuff that I can keep in the county for veterans by, by our veteran employees is what I'm shooting towards, plus the extra money that's in that vehicle replacement account. I am in the process right now of working with a company on getting quotes on a mobile claims van that would do exactly what you, you're suggesting, where we would take that throughout the county as, as outreach. And I've also increased our advertising budget, because now we're, I mean, we're flooding the, the papers, we're flooding the, the radio networks, but there's, there's TV, there's other things out there that we can utilize, and, and as we find what those costs are, then I'm, I'm trying to build that into the budgets.
Yeah, Terry, I did have some questions, you're tying in right where I need. In regards, I saw the hundred thousand in the replacement vehicles, now, a question for you, are you getting prices for that for next year's?
For, for the outreach van, yes, for next year.
You're just pre-doing for, okay, all right.
Correct.
Because the one state term contract had expired June 1st for the one vendor on the state term, apparently. And then I saw that hundred, then minus seventy thousand in contract services, is that to put then a driver on to drive the new vehicle or vehicles? Is that what the difference is? Because you've lowered your contract services by seventy thousand from two-hundred and seventy to two-hundred. Is that can be a swap out into employee?
That, that would be moved, that was, some of that was moved up into the employee wages and stuff, so we can hire more, more, you know, another driver.
But you didn't have much of a change in your salary, personnel, and that's what I was asking, is that what you intend?
Correct, yeah, not much, a little bit increased, because I projected what we're going to spend this year, and we're going to have some money left over to the council rather than going way overboard.
Okay, that's, that's what I was thinking, I mean, it sounded like a better program, you guys doing it versus giving it to an outside contractor.
Because we've, we've had some issues with our Provider Ride provider, and matter of fact, I have a meeting scheduled next week with, with their president and somebody else to discuss some of the issues we've been having with the way our veterans are, are, are picked up and the service they've been providing, especially our wheelchair veterans.
And then I only have one other question in regards to your budget. You have a professional services line item you filled with twenty thousand versus zero for this year. Professional services as to what?
As to if, if something comes up and we need to seek legal assistance just from our board side, the money would be there to do that.
Oh, okay, it's just an in case, because you use the county prosecutor, that's what...
Yeah, but there might be some cases where the county prosecutor doing something for us might be a conflict of interest.
Okay.
So...
That was my only questions on that. I'm going to have to look more into Sam's quote, the may, I thought we shall provide under the language, where'd you go, Sam? Oh, there you are. I thought we shall, not may, so I'll have to relook that up. Okay. I'm not arguing with you, I got to look it up and read it down. I got fifty-nine oh one sitting on my desktop. That's all I have to do, that's all. I'll go to Anderson's and get it today.
But if there's, if there's no other questions, I, I thank you very much for, for your time and for listening to our concerns, and I look forward to having any kind of, you know, dialogue or meeting between our Veterans Service Commissioners and your Commissioners to come to some kind of viable conclusion and solution for, for moving our offices.
But what happens sometimes, Terry, just from the legality, and you guys, I'm sure have the same thing, most of it, when you've got more than a majority of the board working on something, it has to be done basically in a public hearing type stuff here.
Correct.
Other, because we've had that come up before in the past, correct, Jerry? We don't have a choice, so we end up having to do it out here by law.
Correct. Correct.
Love to sit down and work something out, but we do have to make it as a public meeting.
Lisa, you, you're up there. So do you have, like, the last couple of years of their total budget? How much they spent, how much they returned?
Did you get the, what I put in your mailbox?
Oh.
It's the last sheet.
So 2009 and 2010, you received 875,000 and returned over $100,000 of that. Then in 2011, went up to a little over a million and returned 149. 2012, 1.2 million, returned 168. Last year, 1.7 million, and you returned 1.1 million, so you only used...
No, 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 that's this year's expenditure.
Oh, so far, I'm sorry.
That would be the number, Commissioner.
2013, it was 1.3.
So there's, like, with Veteran Services, there's only certain things that your Veteran Service provides for the veterans, and then the other veteran agencies provide other things, like, you know, the VA clinics or different things. So I'm not sure, I'm, I'm looking at across the state, and the CCAO sends out reports, and Lorraine County, we have 27 million for this, 2012, actually. 27,270 veterans. You guys requested...
27,270.
27 million, Commissioner.
27,000. $400,000 worth of financial assistance was required or asked for. 380,000 was spent. And we serviced only 215 veterans that year. Eight of those were denied, and seven of them incomplete, so 200...
We don't like to use the word denied. They, they were not eligible. They did not qualify.
Correct. But the cost per veteran is 1.1,769. The average in Ohio is 530, so it's, we're spending three times the amount of money administratively to service our veterans. So we need to make sure that this money is going to them, not to administrative costs. And the average assisted is 630, and we only serviced 215, so that's three times less. Three times less service, and the cost is three times, or three times more.
And a lot of that is the veterans aren't, either aren't coming to our office, or we have not, we don't have the facilities yet to do the outreach to get out to them. This next year's will definitely be different, because at the beginning of the year, we rewrote our policies and procedures for our financial assistance and increased the amounts, because they were old amounts. Some of the, for, as far as the food vouchers, it was based on 2010 was the last time it was updated. The money that we were giving the veterans to go out and buy substantial food and personal items voucher wasn't enough to give them anything, so the Commissioners have increased a lot of those things. We're finding a lot of the other programs that are out there, there are certain things that they can't do, and we can't do it, so we're looking at ways of creatively offering more to the veterans to help them out. Gas cards, immediate financial assistance, to where when that veteran comes in and he, he's homeless, he has no place to go for that weekend, we have the ability to put him in a hotel until Monday, when we can get him into the office and, and start working on his services. We don't have that capability right now, but we're working towards that. That's all going to fall into this, this, these budget requests.
And that's where I would like to see it go, more there. And then, again, I agree with you on the office space, getting you into the office space. I would like to see you stay at Job and Family Services right now, build up, get what you need as far as the outreach to the veterans. And then, once we get more veterans involved, then take a look at if we need a new facility. But for what you're servicing right now, I think going through, getting the outreach of vehicle, setting up a secondary location, that's what I think the Veteran Services should be looking forward. How to get the money back to the veterans, how to service them. And then not worry about the housing part, as of yet, other than the office space, so you have the privacy for those veterans that do come in.
I was gonna say, we'll, we'll be more than happy to sit down and discuss all those issues and come up with some kind of plan.
Great.
Appreciate it. Terry, any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? I'll yield the mic to Mr. Mackin, one of our Commissioners.
Hey, Terry, I don't know if you spoke with Mr. Williams in your office. I know he's got a lot of creative ideas with the media and that, and they want to take him up on a lot of that.
Terry, can you speak into the microphone so I can hear you? I'm sorry, a public meeting again.
Our expansion right now, where we're actually running two runs to Wade Park as opposed to the one, was one of his ideas, and we've, we've, you know, put the extra personnel on, and we're running two runs to Wade Park. And like I say, with the addition of a handicap, a wheelchair accessible van, I'm hoping to do a lot more of that stuff to keep the money here in the county as opposed to with an outside company.
Thank you, Terry.
Robert Mackin, Lorraine County Veterans Commissioner, Ann Betts. I've been around, I travel the state quite often now, and if we went to Summit County and take a look at that building down in Akron, and look what the veterans down there have a building. Our building, you can't, you can't locate it. It's on 254. How about if we put a big sign out in front there? Lorraine County Veteran Service Commission, instead of having a little teeny sign out there. And, but we need to do is centrally locate this Veterans Commission, and we'd have more veterans coming in, and we need to centrally locate it. We, we, we want to go downtown Lorraine. We want to go downtown Aluria. What we need to do is put it out there on 58 where it belongs, more centrally locate it. And if we go down to, if you go to Summit County and take a look at that, we have no security. To me, a, a security is a big issue at that facility. We, we have no detectors in there for any kind of weapons or anything coming in there, like they do at Summit County. But it's a building that is built for the Veterans Commission. The doctors come there. The veterans don't go out individually and go in. Post traumatic veterans come there, and the doctors come there and talk to them. What we need to do is have a facility that is guaranteed, where you're not gonna have any, any social security numbers going out, anybody coming in that's been in the service that's been raped, and everything to come in and talk in an open forum. It'd be no difference of those veterans coming in here, sitting here at these tables, and giving everybody their information. And I think what we need to do as a county, we have the capacity, we have the money to build a new facility, and that's what I think we need to do, make it easy for veterans to get to. You've got a lot of veterans down south that are going into Parma before they come down to the VA's down in Lorraine. And so the, it's even with the facility in Lorraine, needs to be centrally located in this county. It doesn't need to be one way. The furthest we go down here, everybody comes, we come further, we go any further, we'll be in the lake. So why not centrally locate this building? You have land out there that's for sale at the Golden Acres. The land up front had a for sale sign on it.
I don't think, Bob, that would actually be demographics, population-wise, central to the county. I think central to the county would be somewhere along the Detroit Road Corridor, 57 and Abbey Road.
Easy location to get to this.
Butter Nut Ridge, isn't it?
Pardon me?
Butter Nut Ridge and 58.
Actually...
Central, geographically?
Geographically, not demographics, so we need bodies.
But it's easy. That location, that location out on 58 is easy access to everyone. You've got the turnpike there, you've got everything right there.
Summit County, you're talking, it's the VA hospital and Veteran Service?
No, I'm talking, it's a separate facility, that's a veterans' facility. I'll be down there to 19th of June, I'll be down there at 19th of June. You're more than welcome to come down there to Summit County.
Well, Summit County also has a population close to 700,000.
They have 42,000 veterans.
But no matter what, you look at our, you, you look at our budget, and we still bring in pretty close to 100 to 1 in this county. There's 33 million dollars comes into this county for veterans that are disabled, veterans that are on compensation. That's a, that's, that's a lot of money. Our budget i- is not even, what, 1, 1 or 2% of that? You get more than the money back that we spend, more. And that's what I don't think anybody realizes.
Well, we understand return of dollars.
Right.
We understand what the churn is, Bob.
But thank you, but you need to look at centrally locating that, once and for all, and get it out from where it's at.
If I remember, in 2010, when they were looking at moving the VA clinic, the VA clinic as far as service of veterans was over in Sheffield Village, is where they were looking at it as far as central location for the population of veterans at that time.
That's, that's not been, that, that, that's not been there, but we, we put our, why does Lorraine County always end up last in everything we do? I don't understand that. We have a building down there that's for the veterans, that for that VA facility, has no heat, no air conditioning, no nothing. Does that make sense to anybody in this room?
He's talking about St. Joe's.
I'm talking about St. Joe's Hospital.
I agree with you. I agree with you on that.
And that building needs to be centrally located too. It needs to go up on 58 like everything else.
That would be the state would be in charge of it.
That would be the federal government in charge of that. Our facility, our facility went to Parma to be built.
Well, I just wanted...
As far as I'm concerned.
2009, when the VA, they were in a close St. Joe's, there was, and I can get the building, the architectural drawings for you. It was gonna go into the old Kmart.
Cobblestone.
Cobblestone. And drawings were done. It was gonna have an ambulance service there. Then you had officials that came in, and they made promises to the VA that they could not keep. And that's why it stayed at the St. Joe's location.
Right, but it's only, it's only there to 2015. I think it's, it, it's gonna be changed.
15 or 17?
Yeah, I thought 17 was the end of it.
Yeah, well, and I, I can have a talk with you afterwards. There are people that would like to go through, demolish the old St. Joe's, and build a new VA clinic there. They provide, offer the services, but haven't received a return.
Yeah, but Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Williams, it's one-sided. You're getting people driving from this county all the way north. We can't go any further than the lake. And you're bringing everybody downtown, you're bringing everybody one way. And you're bringing everybody from this county down to a VA facility that's gonna be, no further we can go. Does that, that doesn't make sense even to federal government.
Demographics, even the VA, the feds have said, somewhere along the Detroit Road Corridor is the highest density population of the people that they're there to serve. That's where, there's 53,000 people in our townships. Our cities have 260,000 people. That's where the bulk of them are. So that's why it's kept north, and that's why it was located at St. Joe's, and that's why Veteran Service, I'm assuming, was moved to 254 predating all of us where it currently sits. And the VA looked at putting a facility, if they're gonna do one, in Sheffield Village, because density of population, the ability to get there. Going west or going south doesn't meet those needs. That's simple. Look at the map where everybody lives at, Bob.
Yeah, but I'm talking about easy location to get down at 58. You, you got the turnpike there, you got everything there. You got it all right there. And why can't we go down and build a facility? We have the capacity, we have the money. We have that capacity. And why can't we build a new facility once and for all, and make it elite to this county for the veterans?
Well, that'll be a discussion that Terry invited us to have.
We'll have that discussion. We'll go from there, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else? Sam? Were you gonna say something? Yeah, I saw you leaning over to Terry. I saw you wanting, before I close the public hearing.
Demographic center of Lorraine County basically is along 254 between 57 and Abbey Road in that, in general area. But that's something that really needs to be discussed. Are we looking at servicing a major part of the population? Or are we going to try to include all of the county in there? It's a good subject to discuss, but I think it needs to be, we need to have this conversation as soon as possible. I have no problem with doing it in a public hearing. We don't have to sit down. The more people are aware of the problems that are being experienced by the veterans today, the better off we're gonna be. They have enough problems with their healthcare. They don't need it with the service that the county provides. And as I said, the county, we've had discussions with the county over the 10 years that I'm aware of. None of them have come to fruition.
Nobody's come to us and said, this is what we want, though. Nobody can agree on what they, where they want to go, what they want to do.
There's been some mixed messages from the Commissioners.
Yeah, there's been going back and forth.
That's true, but we've indicated several locations that we would be interested in.
Well, one being the Columbia Gas Building, which is occupied. What about the, the one on Broadway? That First Transit Building, where the dentist offices?
One Park Landing.
One Park Landing? Too small?
Yeah.
Commissioners, with...
The last one you showed us was the one on Broad Street.
Correct.
It used to be like a mini mall, you know, and we've not heard anything about that.
With, with, with respect to Mr. Petunis' position, Mrs. Stone and I have had very productive dialogue. I think it's the execution on our side hasn't quite been there. The, the, well, first off, I'd rather spend money on veterans than on new digs at the courthouse. I'm gonna put that on the record.
Me too.
But the, I have a, I have a prejudice towards that, being a long 20-year veteran myself. The, but Mr. Stone did show a willingness at the building on Broad Street, and he did really, really like the building on Third Street. But I wasn't able to accommodate Third Street at this time, given the various positions of the board members with regard to an ultimate or even a semi-ultimate solution with the adult probation department.
It was kind of good that you guys were here for that meeting prior too, so you see we're kind of debating back and forth where to put probation. And that building over there on Broad Street is one of the possible locations, so that's kind of why I think, and then the Broad Street, or the Columbia Gas Building on Third is where part of probation is now, so they have to move out before you can go there, so it's been a battle.
I understand the delays to a point. There's always delays, but we've gotten past that point. If you look at some of these T-shirts these gentlemen who served have on, they talk about writing a check up to and including their lives. We're not asking you to write a check up to your lives. We're asking you to write a check to provide the facilities that they not only are demanding, are entitled to. They really are entitled to it.
I'm comfortable with the Broad Street building. I really am. I think I conveyed that to the other Commissioners. I think it makes a nice addition to downtown. I met with the administration earlier in the week, and they were talking about this whole plan they're doing on redeveloping the downtown. They've got the TLCI money. I mean, I think the Broad Street building, its visibility, there's adequate parking. I just thought that was a nice fit. We'd like to put a couple other entities in that building to fill it up, because you don't need all of it.
No. Somebody made comment about, I guess the mayor had some objections to somebody being in there.
Adult probation. She didn't want the felons downtown.
I don't see how anybody could object to veterans being serviced.
Oh, no, not at all. No, she wouldn't have a problem with that.
But, but I just wanted to, to let you know that we've had very productive dialogue, and Mrs. Stone, I, myself. And we're, we're a bit on the stall side of that issue. The, the other issue, which we got the Mr. Mackin's comment of why is Lorraine County dead last? Well, I'll answer that. Taxpayers want to be dead last in taxing. We're number, we're the 88th county out of 88 in the sales tax. And the taxpayers resoundly defeated and with pride every initiative we've tried to do to generate revenue. While the Ohio revised code does allocate up to a certain millage on the inside millage with respect to Veteran Services, the state also requires a whole host of other responsibilities that the taxpayers seemingly, I don't know where they think they're gonna be paid for, from. And, and I know that doesn't alleviate what the veterans can receive, but it all comes into the balance, Sam. I'm not argumentative on that.
And you guys have always been good to work with at this point, arguing point, it's a matter of what...
But I just wanted to address Mr. Mackin's question, and it's a good one, and it's a very valid point. You can't be the ninth largest county next to a major urbanized center and be, have a huge portion of your community and urbanizing area and providing those services, have those problems that need to be addressed, and be dead last in taxing. And hope to succeed at fulfilling everybody's desires. I'd love to see a new Veteran Services building. I'd actually like to see if we had the money and we could get a solution, a better alternative for adult probation. A lot of those things would be nice to do. Right now, we're borrowing to fix roofs. We're not paying for that. We're borrowing to fix sidewalks, Commissioners. You know, and, you know, everybody's running around with cameras, and not this group, but the group before this, but people don't really know. When you start borrowing to fix things, as an organization our size, you're mortgaging the future. And that's why we're dead last in everything, and I find it unacceptable, as much as everybody in this room does.
We are not asking for new tax money.
No.
We're asking for a half a mil of, I think you keep four mills of that inside millage. Rest of it goes to schools or whatever. You keep a small part of it. We're asking for the part that the law says we get from the County Commissioners, a half a mil of what you keep. You have it, you collect it every year. It should be available to us. And so far, we haven't gotten anywhere. I, I hope and sense a beginning of a communication dialogue here. At this point, as Jim said, it's incumbent upon the Commissioners to come forward. We look forward to hearing from you in the near future. See what you have to propose. That money is in there only as an expediency. If we have to, we'll use it. If we don't, then we'll work that out too. But let's do something. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Yes, sir.
My name's Jamie Wetherby, Senior Vice Commander, Chapter 11.
My name's Jamie Wetherby, Senior Vice Commander, Chapter 20, DAV. I grew up in Wellington, and I just want to say that I, I agree with what Bob was talking about, a central location. I understand that we want to try to service the majority of the veterans in the county, but we should be servicing all the veterans in the county. Growing up in Wellington, the southern part of the county, I know a lot of, a lot of my friends' parents that served, a lot of my family has served. Many of them never even knew we had a location here in Lorraine County to go to, to get help. Many of them didn't even know we had a VA here in Lorraine County. They all went to Brexville because it was right off the turnpike. We need to put a central location. For me, central location's Oberlin. I mean, the JVS is there, it's because it's central. Whether we put it farther up 58, that's fine with me. Like Mr. Macken was saying, it's easy to get to. And that's what we should be looking at, not where the majority of the veterans are, where all the veterans are. Thank you.
Yeah. The one thing I wanted to put on, you know, they talked about having a satellite location out by the New Russia Township. Don, am I correct in that? It wasn't at the, and, you know, that's, depending on the staff needs, having hours out there so individuals could come from the southern part of the county to New Russia Township or in the surrounding area, Oberlin, makes sense. But I think we still have to have a, the large majority of the group up here to serve the populations that's here. And I know it's probably strange hearing that from me, because I do a lot of representation in the southern part of the county. But again, Veteran Services 2010, when you were looking at moving the VA clinic, they were looking at Sheffield Village.
Go ahead, Sam. You don't have to reintroduce yourself, we know you are now.
Thank you. I just want to emphasize a little bit further on what Bob Macken was saying. Can't actually believe that I'm agreeing, but yeah. But anyway, I have to agree with what he said, because three years ago, Don, myself, and the members of our Chapter DAV 20, well, we had what we call a little veteran stand down. Well, we actually went to Summit County and met with our friend Arlinda, is it, Don?
He's talking, Sam, but you're closing up.
Yeah, excuse me. Well, anyway, she was, she is actually one of the directors, I don't know if she still is, but that facility in Akron. And like you guys were alluding to, they have a much larger veteran population and a much larger budget. But they actually built a fantastic facility, because I've been there on several different location, several different times in the last several years. I mean, they have the privacy aspect of it. They actually have showers for veterans that may have an accident, elderly veterans and stuff like this. It's wheelchair accessible, or handicap accessible, and it's really a fantastic facility. I mean, I've toured it several times, and it would be remarkable if we could get something like that, if we had the money available. That's all I'm saying. But I have been there before, and so have the members of my chapter and several other veterans from Lorraine County been there. It's absolutely remarkable facility. To get something like that would be great, but I just thought I'd like to comment on that.
I doubt a million a year in debt service would buy what Summit County has created.
Well, Ted, you could pay for it, man.
All right, thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Don Addy, Lorraine County Veterans Commissioner. Just to emphasize a little bit more on that, I think if we, even if we start out with our mobile vehicle and that, to do some outreach and that, that we can move around, because we, we have come a long way in that, as far as the outreach and getting the message out there. Jamie brought up a good point, yes. Up until a few years ago, a lot of veterans weren't even aware of the Veterans Commission and financial services and, you know, and aid and that available. But nevertheless, we need to further this outreach, and we have stepped everything up, along with our assistance. We stepped up our advertising, our outreach and that. And I think if we get that mobile van to at least move around and get out to some of the outlining areas there and that, and we can post this ahead of time. Tuesday and Thursday, we'll be out at Wellington, American Legion there, you know, to take claims or help anybody.
Excuse me, Don, have you ever talked to the community college about doing the outreach in their facilities? I mean, they do have Wellington facility, they have the North Ridgeville campus, the Lorraine campus and St. Joe's.
Well, I think what he's, he's referring to, though, there are a lot of-
They're all doing it at post, I understand that. But I didn't know, because the college has such wonderful social media and the ability to get those messages out, if there was a partnership at all with the college on it. Go ahead.
I can answer that real quick, Mr. Caleb. Yes, we do. We actually, there was some money that was donated. They have a lounge over there now at Lorraine County Community College, specific to the veterans. And we have discussed with them about the, the hall across the street for outreach, and that is in the works with us getting out there also.
Because I know the veterans are doing the reeducation component coming back.
Correct, through their fee rapid and everything. But they're agreed to do a outreach as far as if you, it's not, I wouldn't consider it a mobile site, but it's an outreach, one or two days a week, where we send the service officers and then over to the college.
Okay, thank you, Jose. Go ahead, sorry, Don.
No. And I think if we, if we started there, you know, with that outreach there, as far as the mobile van and that, and we get our handicap vehicle and that, because we, we have crunched some numbers and that, and we can actually save some money by providing some of these resources, you know, as far as taking the veterans here and there to appointments and that, versus using, provide a ride. We can save, the money we can save there, we can almost pay for the van on that, on that end there.
Terry did a very good job with that, by the way, because that was my questions with my budget director, and that was our assumption, and Terry did a very good job with that.
Right. And I think along with that, and we get our mobile vehicle out there and continue our outreach and that, then we can look and continue to, to work on this together as far as the facility and that, wherever it might be. I think the central location is, is a, is a good, a good idea. And that would provide for everyone in the area. And that's kinda where I'm at. And I think we can, we can all benefit from that, and, but most of all, we can help our veterans and get the work done that needs to be done for them.
Thanks, Don.
And that's, that's the key, is getting out to the veterans, making sure they're getting the services they need over everything else, so. Exactly. You know. Would love to work with you guys if you get into social media, website designs, give me a call. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Don. Anyone else in regards to the Veteran Services budget during our public hearing? I'll make a motion to clo- oh, you are, Jim, I'm sorry. You're normally not slow, you normally jump right up there.
No, I'm just, Jim Sloan, here in Aluria, I just have a question. And, because I have the utmost respect for our, all of our veterans, and I think they all know that, all of them that I've worked with, talked to, done some things with them. But I do have a question. And Sam, you brought this up, and I don't know anything about this, so I guess I'm asking this question more of a, you know, as an educational purpose. For me, Sam, you were talking about, there's a millage that, that you guys are entitled to? That's true?
Correct.
Now, can-
I was trying to answer it as, Don, Sam, you want to come, because you got the ORC with you anyway, 5901, we can go through it and answer his question.
No, it, it's, it's a simple que- you know, like Sam-
Yeah, but I've got to do it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're recording it, Jim. I'm cheering the media. Give me a second, you're cap council, you chair.
I know. But I don't want my brother Sam here to walk up there, because he said he was getting older, okay? He's been my hero for a long time, you know what I mean? The, the question, the question I have, Sam, is this, you're entitled to this millage that's, that's, that the commissioners, I guess, take out, take out-
The county is authorized to collect 10 mills, property tax levy, unvoted.
Okay.
They can collect them. That is then divided among various political subdivisions. The county keeps roughly four mills.
I'll give you the mic, Sam.
The county keeps roughly four mills for their operations. Rest of it goes to townships, cities, schools, whatever. Of that four mills, under the Ohio revised code, the Veteran Service Commission is entitled to a half a mil.
You want to tell them, I want you to equate it to $200,000, Sam?
That was my next question.
It depends on the population, but it's around $3.5 million.
Okay. Now, let, let me, and I'm not, I'm gonna ask this and probably, probably regret it later, but I'm gonna ask it. That three mills there, is, if they needed that money, is it there now? Because if the county's borrowing money to do things like Mr. Cordez says, if, if it's there, is, it's not like a social security line item that's, that's, you know, put into the general fund and it's being spent, but if they needed it, can they get it? If they need that three mil, can they get it? Is it, is it on a-
It's up to $3 million for them to perform the services of the Veteran Service-
Okay. So the mon- all I'm asking, I guess, is the money is there if they need it?
It's not sitting in a savings account. You're saying it's sitting in a Veteran Service Commission account?
Yes.
No, it's not.
It's social security. It's in the general fund.
Right.
Thank you, Jim.
It's in the general fund.
Okay.
Available up to that certain amount-
Okay.
Required by law, based on the Veteran Service Commission's providing the services that are outlined within the Ohio revised code 5917 versus 5901.
So it's not generated for just that specific purpose?
Okay.
It's generated and they are entitled up to 3.
So, so if they, but if they, if they met all the requirements and everything, and they could get that money?
Yes.
You guys could provide them with that money, even if you had to borrow it?
We would have to, yeah. We would have to take it from somewhere else.
Somewhere else?
Right. We could cut the other line items.
Okay, I mean, I've always wondered how that worked, you know, because when they talk about different amounts of money and, and whatever. And another thing, Sam, and you could probably answer this for me. I keep hearing, you know, if, if St. Joe's goes down, if they decide to tear it down,